Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Judge Merrick at 9:30 and Sheriff and Under Sheriff at 11:15.
Second.
Problem move and second to approve the agenda as presented with the changes. Any further discussion? Hearing done on favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. You're up kid. How are you?
I'm better. But here.
Uh oh.
I picked up whatever one of your mail seems to have.
Oh, that's not good.
I didn't print access for you since I've already emailed you guys everything.
The contract, yeah.
Yeah. And then I figured I can just give you guys the contract that's completed once I have it signed.
Yep.
If you guys, whoever else is signed with me, you guys do.
In particular.
But yeah, I just have that updated contract. They were perfectly fine with putting in the standard terms that the county wanted to put in. So they have added that. Their president has signed, as you can see from the email that I sent you.
Correct.
So I'm just here for the official sign off so I can get the purchase order done and get that contract sign and all and ready to implement by this time next year.
Okay, and can we have purchase order?
Yeah. I scrubbed along it a few times because I've had this one for a while.
Okay. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve a purchase order to Fiddler Technologies on behalf of the Register of Beeds office. This is for Land Record Software Implementation Services, Mastion Mosting and Mastion Implementation. It's for a total cost of $35,500. And this will be coming out of your funds.
Of capital.
Thirty-five five.
Thirty-five five. It was going to be forty-five but they waived the Mastion implementation fee of $5,000. Would you like to see this?
No, it's the same as the contract or something.
Yeah, I'm good.
Second.
Case of problem move and second to approve the purchase order to Fiddler Technologies on behalf of Register of Beeds. Any further discussion? Hearing done on favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
You want me to sign first?
Yeah, we're going to do it in a minute.
I got it.
Morning Todd.
I thought I started late.
Oh, you're good. Brutus Kirby?
Yes. Fifty-five on the high low.
Go back through it. Thank you sir.
You betcha.
Thank you guys. Have a great day. Safe job at home. If it's anything like everybody else, it's going to be that three week thing. Just a time for summer and next week.
Saving important.
Yeah, there was overtime, that's why it was a little bit harder.
She's still there.
Good morning. I got.
I'm back, how are you?
Good.
Assuming our recommendations. You going to help with that?
Yeah, probably. I just need to know when you guys want to set February.
I think that's what we had talked earlier was end of February.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. And we have officially all sent this out to the fire departments. Get them fill in on all the trouble out but we have some that send back.
So basically you're going to send one of these to each fire department. They're going to send back their recommendation and they go from there. Okay? So February is what you're looking at.
Yeah, I think that's what we had all talked before. Just looking at February.
Was it like a Wednesday night?
It's a Wednesday night, so if you guys look at your calendars and see what, let me see what works because I've got to get a cloud to report after it's soon to get it in.
Right. Well, as of right now, I've got nothing, as of right now, nothing on any Wednesday in February. So we're shooting a long ways out.
But usually the third Wednesday that they leave.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth if that works for you guys.
That works for me.
We'll check with Kurt. Yes, we'll check with Kurt on building and then I'll try to get a hit count. That works, that's kind of working inside because sometimes we get bad for them and sometimes we have.
Yeah. Oh, what's that, eighteenth will work for me and it'll work for everybody else? Yep. We'll shoot for that six-thirty.
Six-thirty would be great. And then once I get, maybe the applications in, I'll shove them away.
All right, sounds good. Appreciate it. Another one of these trailers forwarded the accident because I don't quite understand. It's out, this one's out in the lawn Tennessee. Is that where the other one was? That one's out in Florida. Says the trailer was repossessed and moved out of state. But was it ever registered here?
I would think it would have to be.
It's probably one that's leased or something and so it's in. From another state or something. But it's a leased trailer.
All right.
That thing talks good, so.
It's been saying Bluetooth disconnected or Bluetooth connected.
What about maybe five minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been talking to itself sometime. I don't know why.
Trying to connect to. Are the microphones connected to Bluetooth?
The only one would be this one and it's off. I don't know why. Just trying to entertain you folks out here.
Keep us awake. Now see this rail per gets some, so I just leave this.
Judge, you're up. How are you this morning?
All right. I don't want to take too much of your time. I know you had some questions from Pat and so I thought I'd try to answer those. With regard to remodeling over in Jeff County. It was McTerson that did that.
Okay.
This is just, you would ask maybe about a fanatic in the small courtroom. So just to update a couple things. This week we're anticipating the sound board will be installed in the big courtroom. And they should be done by Thursday. So that's been long in the works and we finally gotten the product in and then made arrangements for open dates to get that to the stomach. So that will be happening this week unless something changes. All right, well then as you know, there's a sewer situation in the small courtroom. I looked in there today, Pat's finishing painting the walls, just repainting. Taking kills to several places on the wall and doing that. And the ceiling's almost done. Carpet's been ordered but what we're trying to do right now is just to get it back up and operating. I've long have this plan to see if we could just flip the courtroom and give us a better seating and allow the judge to essentially come in from their office. And so that's what you see in front of you. We have, that's not necessarily going to happen, that's just kind of what we're looking at. Because right now, we're at the stage of where do we go next? To, the new carpeting has been ordered because of what happened to the carpet. If we install it, it presents the question of moving the sound system, even three feet. You know, to get in there so you can take out what's there. Well, that's really hard to do the way it's wired. And so that raises the question of if we're going to put new carpet in there, is that the time to explore either moving or getting the new sound system? We're trying to get bids. We did get a bid from our current vendor. Although we'd like to get bids from two others and we have feelers out there to do that. But just to give you those numbers, again, we haven't committed to anything. To move the system with the idea of moving it, it got cut off a little bit in the copy but essentially into another room and mounting it on a wall. So it's not under the judge's bench. It's not a very convenient place for us. So to move it, they wanted $11,000. Of course they have to rewire it and so. Their new system would be $30,000. That would allow you to continue to use the old system while they're, you know, mounting it. Again, we'd like to get two other bids on that. One of them would be from McMillan who's coming to put the sound panels on starting tomorrow. I had contacted McMillan. Of course the guy that's good at the sound panel isn't the sound system person. He said they get that. Said they'd get that to their salespeople that we call up and ask them about that. And then there's a company in Seneca that does sound systems. Amy contacted them. We just need to see if we can get them down here to give us a bid. Because they said they were extremely busy for some reason putting in some systems for several churches up that way. So we really don't want to do, talk about anything about the sound system until we get these other bids too. Because we've had some dissatisfaction with SciTech at times. In fact, the last time, as I understand in talking to our chief judge, they had to replace the system in Potawatomi County. And they did get a bid from SciTech and they did have McMillan come and look at it. And ultimately, they went with McMillan because their price was cheaper. And part of the reason was is they had said, "Well, we're not as sure that you need these bells and whistles." And so they ended up going with McMillan. So that's what we're hoping to at least look at prices for that. But again, once we got those bids, we'd have to carefully look at where would we get the money from? Because we know where we are with insurance, which is basically going to end up, obviously, rent deductible, but essentially covering pretty much the carpet, the ceiling, the painting, to deal in the course of the sewer repairs that were done up there. So we have to see, you know, there could be various sources of funds depending on how much money we're talking about.
Is the expensive part of this sound system the recording portion of it? I mean, $30,000 seems like a ton of money.
It does, I agree with you.
$11,000 seems like a lot of money just to move it.
Yeah, there, the, as I understand it, the the recording is actually happening on a PC computer.
Yeah, digitally recorded.
With a different product. Voice products is who we use for that. They're a separate vendor who provides that service generally for most courts and kids in our district. And that wouldn't change, so nothing about that would change.
So what exactly on the sound system is going to change? Is the microphones, the amplifier and that's pretty much it?
We purchased a new amplifier. And so on that $30,000 bid, that includes us providing the new amplifier that SciTech had installed earlier to repair the old system. To move the old system, I assume the expenses, I mean, just the wiring situation. Unlike our newer systems, if you try to get your head behind there, it's just a spaghetti of wires. Because we'd be keeping the speakers in the ceiling, nothing needs to change about that. And all you're really doing is the wiring up there, instead of running toward the north, it would just run to the south. So I don't understand that. We would like to, there are four mics right now, we would like to have five mics, but that's not.
Does the system have capability for additional mics? The system you have right now?
I think it does. In fact, I think it had five mics when I got here. But we had to, had other problems and so some mics burned out and we got down to four and we've been running on four for, oh, at least five or six years. But ultimately, sure, we'd like to have five, and the bid is for five. I'll have to look at the, I think the move was move what we got there. It's just that, like I said, in its current situation, you can't, it's not like it's an refrigerator where you can pour away from the wall, which would be nice. You just can't do that, the wires are some type, there's just not a lot of gear. I don't know why Smith Audio, if you originally did that, wired it some type like that. And so I assume it would be less if we were like, well, we just need to temporarily move it three feet and then slide it back and do the carpeting. So, yeah, and that's why we do want to get some other bids. And obviously, sometimes it seems, you know, everything inflation wise goes up, but electronics, not necessarily. So that's why we want to get bids on that. So otherwise, the schematic just shows you, by doing what I'm proposing, we would get more seating in there, get a better alignment. And then I've done some more thinking about that and we just save a lot of money by it. We just reconditioned the bench work in-house by getting some, essentially putting a new skin on the bench. Is about all that really means. I've looked at it, it's a really solid piece of equipment. So we'd essentially be keeping the same bench and I thought to Pat, you know, he has the ability to put a new skin on it. I don't know what that would cost, but, you know, we're talking about getting my mind in a couple of pieces of paneling. It's just they have paneling nowadays that looks a lot like the wood on the bench and the wood on. And then you just put some trim on, which Pat tells me we have some oak type trim laying around and he doesn't know what to do with it. So with regard to that, you know, I think I mentioned to you, you bens have put like 12,000 or 14,000 dollars on the bench, which is a lot. But as I looked at it, got the thinking about it, bits of looking at that paneling and then talked to Pat about it. To me, other than the looks of it, there's nothing wrong with the bench. It's a, it's a nice bench. And it's not connected to the step up that's there. And so, you know, just go along the floor there. And so really, the most expensive thing would be if you're going to do a new sound system and then yes, you have to get some new wiring, you know, to run along the south wall, because there's really not any plugging's over there. And then run sort of along the side and under the bench. And then look at, you know, your mic plug-ins and put them at the bottom of the bench. And put electrical plug-ins like in the bottom. Rather than like, you know, in the big courtroom, they drill holes in the floor. That's kind of expensive, but the, there's not as much room between where the council table is and the bench and there. And so possibly doing that. But obviously, those, bringing in the data, the electricity and the sound system stuff. You know, there would be definitely some expense there if you're going to have to bring the, you know, electrician in to run some power to get that set up. The thought though is to try to keep the expenses as, you know, it's not meant to be an elaborate courtroom. It's just a simple one, so that's the idea there. Again, we have to get some expense, but right now, the big thing is getting some bids on the sound systems. Once we have those numbers, we talk to the guys. But again, the cheaper it is, the greater the likelihood that we can find funds in some different places to maybe get that accomplished. Last comment.
That's just, that was whole, my whole point earlier is, is if you guys had some funds, you know, that you could, you could find, personal opinion, it just makes sense to flip the courtroom now. Rather than lay, you know, get everything laid out, do it like we have it right now and then do it later. It's just, you know, that's, that's the whole piece of fun. Could you email that, that bid for the sound system?
Yeah.
I, I would appreciate seeing that, that just kind of blows my mind.
Yeah, and, and the key there is, I mean, if I can get the expenses down so that we have some fund, I mean, and so a lot of those lines, you know, I've been doing a lot of thinking on this and looking at it. And deciding, you know, what are needs and wants, you know how that is.
Yeah.
And obviously, this whole sewer thing has sort of gotten me going. It's like, well, it's happened, so we're going to be getting new carpet, we're going to have to paint. Now's the time to do that. Especially if we want to get new carpet in and have to at least move the sound system some and not sure how the hell we're going to get that done. But, you know, I've been thinking about it, so this is just my personal belief, so I've been talking to our chief judge, is here's a further way to simplify and drive down our long-term expenses. Skip the whole bathroom situation up. We've gotten by for a hundred years, but here's my concern, as I've given a lot of thoughts. I've never had one juror complain about having to come down here when we take a break to use those bathrooms. And the great thing about it is, these are big bathrooms out there. You've got six stalls in the men's room, I think three in the ladies' room. And so there's a lot of capacity there. I remember the one time I found out that we had one staller in, up there. And all 12 of them just queued up right there, not on that. And so even if we had one there, it's probably going to result in some queues and I might tell them to go downstairs anyway. You'd also end up with such a cluster of, right there in that hallway. You've got the stairway upstairs, you've got the court's office, you've got the courtroom entrance, and then having another one, all those people queuing up. Because here's what I found out, this is human nature. If there's a bathroom nearby, people will stay in line for it. But if it's not there, they'll go downstairs where it is. But here's what I would suggest, this is just me. If you're going to spend some money, make the second floor bathroom that's not in commission useful again. That's where I would spend the money, return that bathroom to use. That way, ladies, make it a ladies' room. That way, for jurors, we could say that the ladies could go all the way downstairs and some of them would go to the second floor. And then they still can go downstairs. And for any of our big crowds, and that's what we're talking about, you know, they can go downstairs, that's what these bathrooms are built for. But if you were going to spend money, do it on that bathroom, because it ups your capacity a little bit. Then the clerk's area, just keep it totally for the operations of the clerk of the district court. So now you might have two private offices, but as far as what the attorneys have, don't worry about that. Take that small room that we're all, yeah, it could be for bathrooms. And put two soundproof cubicles in there, just in two different places. And then another little meeting area, and the attorneys can use that to meet with clients. This all simplifies things a lot. And when you simplify things, costs go down. But you're still accomplishing your big purposes. So those are some of my thoughts on that is, you know, I am in the midst of looking, I mean, it's true that if you look at the dimensions of that small room, the dimensions of bathrooms, you could potentially put what I call a European style unisex bathrooms in there. You could get five stalls in there, including a handicap stall. You'd have to have, you know, each stall would be private. In Europe, they say, you know, the stalls, the doors go all the way to the floor except the nut door and the sling. The sidewalls go all the way to the floor, they go up to the ceiling. And so each stall is unisex. The bathroom, anybody can go into the bathroom itself and then each stall is like that. You in theory could get five of them in there. But you'd still end up with like one jury queuing up there and that cluster of people.
I'm sorry to interrupt, will you be, will you be up there this afternoon? Do you have court for?
I don't have court today.
Okay, so you'll have, would you be in your office this afternoon? If you don't care, I'd like to come up and, and I'll just make contact with you, we can walk over there. I'd like to take a look at the wiring situation and just.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too.
Yeah, yeah, Pat's got it all almost ready, so you can go in the small courtroom and the other.
I may have to see Judge.
And I can show you that. So that hopefully answers your question about what's going on up there. And then gives you some thoughts about other things.
And I have been in contact, I think I told you, with Polk Creek Construction out of Alver. They are a, I would consider a local company that does their plans and builds.
Yeah, design build.
Design build company. As opposed to hiring an architect and spending 30 grand on that. They're going to do it in-house and make sure that things are where it needs to be and stuff. They do have some availability in the next year, but it's, it's picking up quick. And so I just told him it was going to depend on funding.
Oh, yeah.
And we'd let him know.
Yeah, and that's why also, just, then I'll stop talking and then we have something else. This presents more of a phase, so, you know, we go ahead and do the small courtroom, but then we can do it fairly cheaply other than the sound system issues. We could do that other room. We can do the clerk's room as a separate thing, you know, just try to keep it simple.
Sounds good, yeah, if you could, if you could email me that proposal, I'd be interested.
Yeah.
Sound system, I'd appreciate it. All right, sounds good, thank you Judge, appreciate it. We'll, we'll get with you later today.
No problem, thanks.
Don, you're up buddy.
All right.
How are you?
Good.
Go ahead, have a seat, relax.
Bum down after, I'm the commanding GFW if anybody doesn't know. Tim Reno, he's our chaplain, he also is the committee chair for FERW.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I want to thank you for graciously letting us use the Vander Event Center for Veterans Day. That was an all-county deal and he went up and was really well received. And we appreciate it and I want to thank you for your time today. Everybody knows we're coming up on the 250th birthday in the United States and we're going to start it off with a bang and I'll turn it over.
Reason we're here is, for the last couple of years, we've done the fireworks display out there at Vander Creek for New Year's Eve. And what we're asking for is is that we can be covered for that, sure.
We typically need our insurance to make sure.
That's why I'm happy, yeah, I want to formally come here and ask.
Thanks, I appreciate you, John. Give us a great, great condition and I think it's what we want.
I think this year we might do a little bit. Anniversary, you know, and we had music and all, great music and stuff like that.
Sure.
So, but that's the reason we're here.
I have no gift for that, I think that'd be a great idea, no question. We'll come to you guys again and go that way.
Make sure the clerk gets all the insurance.
Yep.
Has the coverage for the event and take care of that.
We do, that's all we needed, unless there's any questions or.
Can't think of anything, you guys are doing a great job, I really appreciate everything you guys are doing. You've been community, thank you, so.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good day.
Thank you, have a good day guys.
Oh, is Joe back?
We're not in the hallway.
They're what?
We're not in the hallway anymore.
Oh.
Maybe upstairs or something.
I saw him stick your head in.
I saw him stick your head in, yeah.
Seems like a ton of money just moved.
That's what I said, I want to see the, obviously the bid.
$11,000 just to move it just moves the money.
And the money didn't grow, it didn't wire.
Didn't wire it, but that much?
And then SciTech, somebody else. And it's site tagged, somebody else? I'm not familiar with it.
Yes, I believe they are, to speak to Kansas City, I think you got offices in Kansas City. I just can't feature eleven thousand dollars to move the sound system.
Is that worth?
Is that certain standard that you're looking at? I can't see how, you know, but, I mean, the one thing I could think of is that...
There's a lot of courtrooms, they don't have a corporate courtroom. Well, but that's a separate system, that you brought up earlier, that's a separate system from the sound system. And they weren't gonna upgrade that, so...
Well, that's on the computer, but isn't that, it's gotta pick up from the audio, right?
I'm sure it's gotta pick up from the audio, but I'm sure it's just occasionally, I would guess.
Don is the... Don, what are they?
No, that's, uh, feedback.
What branch of service did you retire out of?
I think you're...
It's too...
Yeah, I believe so.
I see that it's quite a little area.
Yeah. Once these minutes are approved, are you going to then send the different boards?
I already did.
You're in, perfect. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I told them it's for 2026, so starting January, very...
Yeah. Okay, perfect. That'll work.
It's a changing mind today, that's too late.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, no change in mind on that.
All right, Tom, what you got for us today?
It's been kind of quite a week last week, so the only thing, I was sending stuff on the bridge, Steph, we're gonna talk about that. But other than that, it's just the Laredo contract, signing this lock in the door.
Yeah.
Like that.
Okay, the Fenmore View, yep.
My car, Laredo, this one, let me see.
Yeah, we'll wait on the bridge, Steph, until Scott gets here. Good Thanksgiving.
Yeah. It was good, oh, yeah.
You bet. So, Scott, there was just a one, she said she was... You know, we had these minutes and said that the sheriff asked to present Joe World with the weapon and badge.
His email only says that, would you communicate with the commissioners that I would like to give in his badge and a plaque for his service to the county. It doesn't say anything about his weapon.
Normally, I thought it did.
No, go back and read.
I didn't see it, no, I just wrote what you said.
Yeah.
I know, but I went, I went back, I'll be back later, and I went back and read the email, and it just says, since it is county property, I would need them to approve. It doesn't say anything about his weapon. Like to give his badge and a plaque for his service.
Well, he's come in, did something to ask me?
Okay.
The badge, I mean.
He feels part of it?
Yeah.
I said...
They've always, so when Chad retired, they did the same thing as him.
Okay.
Uh, he can ask me today, though.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just ask you, we can clarify that when we go back and then that will come.
Uh, definitely.
Got parades on, will you?
Yeah.
Hold on.
But it's a matter of play operators and giving the...
Yeah.
I'm going to need X, that's what Mary said. She's the one.
She's here. We should go back to the hospital, it's like English is like...
All right, what you got, Keith? Scott? For the sign off sheet for Joe, sorry, today. We don't have the background check back yet for the... Door screen may be there, but different thing on today, two day class, so maybe there is... Uh... The email the guy asked last week about the rock.
Mm-hmm.
Or wrecked that, so I think that's something we need to have Christie with. Need to amend the budget, or... Or out, or... She said as of right now, we're just asking about this morning, she was saying that as of right now, we don't need to amend the budget. Okay. See if I can... So, we should have forty-eight thousand coming this month to be provided with the income for the... Right, but what's, what's left in that? If that can be utilized. Well, the budget, one point three billion, that's down to... Seventy-seven. Big, well. We're getting numbers I got from Mary last week, you know, we said so much aside for W, uh, said we had seventy-five thousand left in that. And the other percent, said we had twenty thousand left. Which, uh, Mary at the time had like ten thousand more in, which is seven hundred discs, where you can match up. That, and so that puts down about ten range. I told Matt last week, I said, you haul six hundred tons and then stop. So, they did offer that. Highest of, uh, that exists. And the road fuel reimbursement, there should have been five hundred and seventy thousand, give or take, in that. I have it right. At the... That's probably good, yeah. Because that was part of our conversation on W Road, is to use that money. Uh... But if we did, that's something we can... And again, we can use, not for W, we can use for just general maintenance, if we've got places that are in bad shape. Which I'm sure we do have for rings.
Yeah.
Did you find that in there? The, what, like, see the spatial city county highway, that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, that shows... Uh, what is it, just... That shows a hundred and twenty-five in that, I believe. You know, here today, we're doing that as quarter, four point four, you know. But that's uncovered? I believe so, yes. Correct, correct. Correct, I mean... So, the highway funds is going to be all... That, so that's happened this year, so... That would be money that could be utilized to get us... Have to use it, but if we have situations where we need some rock, there's that there, and then we have the income for... So, if it was, uh, if that would get posted for the point four, set us back, it would get posted in December?
Interesting, I mean, she might have got it.
Did you, did you, probably after, after...
She's in that first week of January.
We should have two full months, should have two full months of that. My suggestion is that, based on what I looked at, when I saw that, don't exceed what the estimated revenue is. So, if it's forty-eight thousand, shoot, thirty-five, you know, just... Plus, I did my own foundation, say, actual revenue, even if I don't want to stop to say, so... Yeah, but they need to be areas where your play operators are saying, we need, you know, we need something here, you know? I think that's part of the... Yeah. It's like, here's one more caller, it's that, this right operator just called and said, hey, we need some rock over here. Did you do anything over on, uh, ideally, that couple, you know, the couple over there? I think my whole, you talked to Richard about that? Yes. Anything, something I can... I have checked with you, so... Yeah, I'd verify with him, because it sounded like the hole was pretty big. It's okay, I'm marking. Yep, just keep, do what you're doing, just keep it on the budget, if you have any questions, then talk to Christie. It kind of gives you idea about what you've got, so we've got to work with it. Uh, we're gonna talk with the landowners down there, it's H and, uh, one ten to one thirteen, we'll talk about closing out, and then, uh, one ten to H. Uh, they're all on that, they'd like to pass, they'd bring gates up across there. A little less than normally dealt, that's it, probably just have that, uh... We can't, we can't... You'd have to have it side to side or something to get that, or... Just one point three, for a minute. What did, what did we do out east of town? We allowed that guy to put gates up there, because, uh, there's no fence. We didn't, we didn't vacate before. We just closed it. We just closed it, but we allowed him to put gates up there. Yes. So, you have to put a fence down there. No. I don't have a problem with putting up gates if we're, if we're just closing the road. As long as it's not inhibiting somebody to build their property. Their landlord right there. So, as long as we have something, I would want it in writing from those landowners, that they're, they're okay with that. Um, as long as that... We still have, we still have rights with these. Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's fair, just make sure that... Oh, I have a problem with that one. I would want something, you know, there's, that I say... There's a problem, everyone's got through there, that one person is on, and they said that would probably initially be dead, because it's not worth the maintenance of the front end to keep up with one person. As long as there's more line of arm, so we still have to have access to it, it's just... We still need to public, publicize that we're gonna swallow that road and give people hearing and opportunity to object to it. Yeah. But if you can have those in writing, notarized in writing ahead of time, do you need to write something up, or can they just write? Kind of remember what we did last night for that, just have some kind of resolution. I think we need a resolution. Right, but from the individuals. Um... Simply stating they don't have a problem with closing the road. I don't think needs being special forms, just that, that they've all concur that the road can be closed, that they're not landlocked, or denied access to, to the road, because of... And then we got utilities in it, is that right? Yeah. In right of way? Uh, to go cross the property, to cross our road. Cross, it's not going to be parallel to it. Okay, crosses, so road crossings, the... I don't think they have, it's a road crossing. Permit, right, and you guys have, it's a cross. Those through the road. Yeah. Right. Yeah, so he would know that they're gonna need access. I'm just trying to make sure that, yeah, if we could, the other thing you're probably doing for landowners, you gotta have access to them, to do, to block them up. And there's something saying, you're getting up, you're getting on it. Well, I mean, it's just so that the ore, that, you know, water guys can get in there, and whoever needs to get in there. They need to understand that they have farm to eat. Right. Yeah. You should see it, I think, but... Right. But, but, yeah, I would prefer to have something notarized by each landowner, that they're okay with putting up the gate. Uh, and they'll be responsible for putting it up, or do we put one up out there? No, for landowners. That's what I thought. Yeah, they could have signs of... I think we need to go down toward the end of roads and say, uh, no outlet, and then, they're going to close up there. Do it for people. Yeah, just no outlet, I would think, for these locations. Cause then, two, live up to the end of the wall, wall, all three of them, on the greens, that's if you're scared of the devil, so make them walk on the road, or... Yeah. Okay. And all the, it's all the same as all, set up, break down, it was done last week. Got one semi down at Topeka, it's got a death issue, uh, impulse, so, kept it, so, probably a time, definitely, that was going on, but... It's going to live, huh? Uh? Did it go into live fund? The day it's, it's got a death issue. Right now, they're shorting it, and so they don't want to be working on it, so... One fifty-eight east of seventy-five down there, just off that, asphalt, check the seal. Between seventy-five and... You come off seventy, or Ether? Yeah, you come off seventy-five, right, we come off the seal right there. All that construction equipment running across there, and we've also got a lot of construction on the, on the one ninety-eight right now, that guy with the, the bridge, the tracks. Uh, do you ever get over, get a little overlook at, uh, one fifty at east of the highway? I've heard several times, that's, that's just where I've called, a little bit there. One fifty? Yeah. Yeah. They're supposed to, I got some call from the greater operator, I thought he was gonna go over there and just... Well, you have to... That's been done. I got to check it. Okay. Having, uh, some rock they did haul last week, uh, X, one fourteen to one twenty-two, had two bunks there, uh, one seventy-four, uh, D to D, had two bunks there. Uh, one ten C to D, had two bunks there, and two eighty-six R to T, had four bunks there. So, that's right around, so, yeah. Then we got, uh, seal bids for bridge inspections, uh, sent out by, back to back. Even the bridges, for all of our bridges, the normal rights inspection. Not the ones that... Uh, I'm just on the view. That's what I see here, one hundred and eighty-six, so... I have two flat trouble, consume all the bridges, hundred eighty-six, uh, bridges for biannual, nine for annual, and then one for N S T M inspection. Right. For a total of thirty thousand six hundred fifty-four.
So, this one's from E E S L L C out of Garter. So, it says, total is twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty thousand base bid, the speed may be adjusted to the actual number of bridges that's affected. Is there something else in there I need to look at?
Yeah, should have. Should have a number of bridges, and what the total are.
Here's routine inspection, a hundred eighty-five bridges for eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty. N S T M inspections, one bridge for a thousand dollars, and then it says, Bridge R dash three twenty-four. I'm reading that, no. Annual bridge inspections, nine bridges, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty. Total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty.
Seems like a heck of a difference.
He's always been, he's just a couple of guys that own this business apart, you know, how old they're created, and everybody else has.
It also says on the complex trouble that annual bridge inspections could be based on a biannual inspection result, meaning the price would be lower because biannual are cheaper than the annual by eighty-one dollars, uh, seventy-one dollars. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what that means when he says could be based on a biannual inspection result. So it appears to me that, so they're, they're out of that, or?
They're, they're the same one.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I find it as long as we, I had a hundred and eighty-six bridges that are biannual, so you had a hundred and eighty-five.
This is under eighty-one.
Yeah, so it appears they missed one.
So I don't know why is this tenderized?
Bridge R two, three twenty-four.
Is that just that one?
Right. Say that again.
Right.
Fracture very well, we have one fracture.
Want to say the E, E, E S, that's who you have regularly abused in the past?
I, I do, we go as low bids, long as we check with them the difference between a hundred and eighty-six and a hundred and eighty-five bridges and where, why they only bid it, and as long as that's, if there is a hundred and eighty-six, it still falls within the per-bridge number.
Hundred and eighty-six is on the federal inventory. That's a tough one.
Yeah, but we gotta leave a hundred and eighty-six on the stretch.
Yeah, and that's what, what I was going to add, so as long as, as long as they understand there's more than they can do, and then they don't charge us thirty thousand dollars for that one bridge. I mean, as long as it's applicable to the other eight hundred and eighty-five, I'd move to use E F.
E S.
E E S.
E E S L L C.
It's got the. That would be my option.
All second.
Can you practically move in second, if that we go up to one bid of E E S L L C for our bridge inspections for a total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars base bid? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. You want me to slide both of these?
I will. Again, I have to see.
Yeah, we're sure they're both the same.
They're both the same.
I don't know if one's gross.
So it says, actually, can't be announced as E E S, so I'll put it on one of the channels.
We got the bridges, yep, it's time to start down. Oh, you want. Well, I guess, I don't know, if anybody's gonna take the place to start it, other than. I've got, you know, what could be handled for a minute, which is just another element of this, which is trying to get my key under me, how we. We have to have some kind of uniform system. Somehow, I don't think it exists, but we've gotta get a classification system so we can track all this because they got this email where they give numbers to our, your guys' county bridges, which, I mean, I don't know how you relate it to what we've got on the inventory or whatever, so.
Easiest way I ask is match, if they say.
Okay.
Their numbers that are on here match a lot of the C, the C B one and two.
Yeah, C B.
Yeah.
So we just need to create a data that has all the British inventory in it.
That's the thing, there's a national inventory, it's easier to add it to it.
These, this is.
Emails that I have.
They're saying these are not international.
Right.
Okay, so that's number one, I mean, because the inventory, we're talking about a hundred and eighty-six, right? That's, that's the spreadsheet I had in my packet that had. I just gave you guys the ones that are B I A bridges and the ones that are tribal bridges in that. All the rest, it could be approximately two hundred and forty-four bridges of your assets. It's just designated county bridge under the inventory system. So, you know, that's, that's our baseline. I'm trying to figure out how we have twenty-two bridges that are not on the inventory.
I, I count the, like, thirteen or fourteen, so I. I actually went out and looked at them, and if they're not over twenty feet, they're not classified as a bridge. So these I would have to verify and measure out those. I know they not verified as a bridge, but these are verified as a bridge, if they're over twenty foot, they're not classified as a bridge.
And that's the one that you gave us last week?
Yes.
Does this match with the twenty-two we have on this email? No?
Um. Eighteen fifteen groups.
But they have spreadsheets, that's news. See number twenty-two, I thought we had a twenty-two, just kidding.
Didn't see that, and the reason is, I went up to the number forty on it, and I had it as number seven at one time, and they came back and said, this is operating number four. So that's why I don't really spend any time.
So you can tell first off. So it's. Still under challenge.
That's true.
So I guess we're trying to get to, this list here is on reservation. These are all on reservation. And.
Everything, now the X is, it say B I A, B I A routes or tribal routes, I've only got one that's indicated it's not on a tribal or any B I A route.
Okay, how did, it's an interesting question because they have a, the P number, B nine nine seven, that's usually how they do B I A.
That's right here on their map.
But I don't know that, I mean, if it's not on this, then B I A hasn't. Bureau of Indian Affairs is listed in there.
And again, this email dated back from August fourth of two thousand and nine, says to Tim, which is Tim Ramirez, uh, any bridge located on the B I O, B I A owned route should be listed as a B I O's B I A owned bridge. Uh, foredate Roger, which was the guy who owned the fund. Uh, and he can get these bridges, add them to the inventory as B I A owned, and we can start inspecting them. The next cycle of bridges inspection will be, uh, summer two thousand and ten, and we should, so we should, so we need to get this done by then. I don't think it got done. My. Good, like I said.
We've got. Okay, here's number two, the one that was, it's, uh, B nine nine five. Yeah, because this is from the. Better, right?
You're saying it's number two on this list?
Yeah.
B nine eight nine five? Nine eight nine five.
Yeah.
Got one fifty-eight G six.
That's, that's why I don't understand why it's much kickback, and, you know, because again, it's on that map as the B numbers. So they would have had to done that at some time.
Yeah.
But all these, a lot of them they have, uh, like the, that first one or number two, um, it says ownership questioned. So there are a lot of them on here that is saying, you know, ownership is questioned, but these are the.
Ownership meaning responsibility for it.
Yeah. Meaning likely that the bridges were created with B I A money or federal money.
Probably.
So our goal is to get them to show that these are all their responsibility and to make sure that they're being inspected in the timeframe that it's supposed to be. Does that require seeing Bureau of Indian Affairs?
Now, that's fourteen, fifteen, fifteen there.
In, if, I guess it's a standard reason for me that we would need to check Bureau of Indian Affairs, it's like, you have a representative that's been here and figuring this out. We believe that there are showing thirteen stuff here.
Well, yeah, they don't all have.
Yeah.
Probably three have the D's. Not L P A routes.
But they're on the reservation, and they're on.
Yeah, well, there's two, yeah, on the reservation. But there just has B I A to bring this. So.
So it's, it's two things then, well, actually, we need to, we need to make sure that what we show as B I A, they will take ownership of, what is tribal, that they will take ownership of, and what is our responsibility, that we take ownership of.
You think that's just figure out? I remember last year I just left, and it brings out the story. Once you get that, that's what we gotta do.
And how do we approach that, how do we deal with similar matter, just stating that we have all these bridges that we need to verify that they are your responsibility based on the fact that we have.
So what about number, number nine, that's the one that's on the county road and on the other?
This one.
That's that story, so. Yeah, I think that's it right here.
That's, so I'll make county routes, that's on their map here, blue, right here, that they're saying is a county route.
Do we maintain? We don't. We don't maintain, we don't maintain that for the world. Okay?
See, they're also showing that, you know, part of K, that, that they're, they should maintain it, we do a lot of. Saying some of these other roads up here that are, they're route, we're maintaining.
Where, where does that?
The one.
Over here, the one they're talking about, obviously, that'll.
So I asked him, my last video, I said to him, does he have documentation where it went back and said, uh, those were actually, they're route, I don't know route, things like that.
So there's anything, this is B I A, right, that color? So there's something that it's B I A owned? Clear into the city?
No, no, no.
Is that state?
State.
Okay, all right, all right. They got that ship and seal from American Highway up to the old. So that's a highway.
Yeah.
So they're saying they should be maintaining the whole, one by eight all the way through.
Yeah, well.
See, have, so if they're not, if they're not bringing the actually maintained.
Cancelled by this.
Right.
I, I was counting here that where Brandon Hunley and Regis Fulton, they paying on reservation for around fifty miles a week. That's where he's third in followers. So I said four, four offices, but then again, you got police folks out here.
But are they, are they giving money from the federal highway?
No.
Because they're showing on these maps, we may think all these roads, but people actually do it.
I don't know.
But it's fraud, right?
Sure.
But it's.
So. Did you send a letter, email to Bureau of Indian Affairs and deal with them? Is that what I'm thinking?
Well, I mean, there's gotta be, you know, we gotta go back first, this word ownership is being drummed around. When it's really that maintenance, there's not maintenance of roads, right? For, because, you know, to my mind, what we researched and determined, to my mind is, is that right of ways, as long as they're on the section line, are all county owned, right? Now, if not maintained, that would probably, you know, default to you guys to fix them or close them or deal with them for public safety purposes.
Right.
And so, you know, the, the idea that you're, right now, all you have is kind of, I don't know how you say it. I, I guess the question being is whether the B I A routes, are you guys doing any maintenance on B I A, B I A routes?
We are. That's the thing, for some of the roads, yes, we are, doing maintenance on them.
And not getting anything from federal government. And do you have any idea why that is, meaning if somebody.
I don't.
If somebody asks, does she do it, because she do it, people complaining.
Nobody else, the tribe wasn't doing that, so.
Okay. Do you, who runs the road bridge out there now, the gal?
Lisa Longino, actually, she's not long to deal with.
Who do you deal with?
Dylan? No, I'm one of the other one. Uh, it's, uh, logging a member and.
But you don't deal with anybody from locally?
No.
From road stock?
No. I got no work with them, they wouldn't get information or anything like that.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, we just need to send a letter to the B I A and say, look, we've got X number of roads that show on a map, created by them, that are B I A roads, we've been maintaining them, we need reimbursement for that, we need some ownership of the bridges and get somebody attention.
The smiles there are eight of these bridges that's in question. Those files there are eight of these bridges that's in question. Okay, because I went back and found that stuff because when I had that quote put together, he said if I had files on, it'd be $2,500 a bridge to inspect, and I don't, then it'd be $30,000. So most of these files, if you read this right here, this is, this is a black circle, it's a field inspector. A lot of these have documentation like that, turn them into a trojan. Okay, so based on that, again, I think we just need to send a start enough letter to get somebody's attention to take part in this. I mean, I think we have a valid reason to ask for funding back on all these bridges, and we're going to go back however many years in those that we've been currently maintaining. So that would be item number one. How many miles are we maintaining of BIA roads? And for how many years have we been doing that? So that we can say to BIA, this is what we believe it's costing, and we're not being paid to take care of. And the tribe doesn't maintain it.
Is there nobody in Portland, BIA?
I've already been there too.
You've been there too?
Okay. Got to get much help out of that.
Nope.
They're anti. But the drawings that were done out are from the...
Okay, so I'm... I'm digging through this, so what we described. And I guess the first thing is, we feel like we've got a handle. Really, the question was, originally, they wanted an MOU about specific locations.
Yep, it's that 190 and I.
Which one is that?
This one right here, 190 and I seven. It's five.
Okay, so 20.
Yeah, and again, I had that as number seven, and they came back and said, no, that's our bridge number one.
But we don't know, that's one that doesn't have, it's on a BIA route, not a tribe route, not?
Well, I believe it is on the BIA routes. It's just, they were saying that they never had, they don't even build it, but yet I've got drawings with their name, not very bad, probably the tribe.
So I'm trying to go back to saying, what do we know? Everything on the inventory is, the federal inventory is good. We've got fourteen bridges that are not on anybody's inventory.
Correct. But they're on the reservation.
They're all reservation.
And of those fourteen, we don't maintain the road that they laid within, or we do. So we need to divide that out. So if the bridge is on the reservation, but we're maintaining the road, and it is our road to maintain, that's... The thing we're going to count, one, that is actually on our route.
Okay.
To maintain. So we do maintain those other roads that are not our routes. And that's where I was going with this. So we need to define those and just send a letter down there saying, you know, you dispute this, and if you do, please show us the proof. And the fact that we've been maintaining, I'm going to use the number 45, 50 miles a road, that is BIA road, it's costing the county X number of dollars, and you're going to come up with a number for that on an annual basis from rock, labor, you name it, and put a number to it, and it goes back to, and you're going to figure out what number it is, how many years back have we been doing this? Ten years, fifteen, twenty? 2009 was a lot of this.
Well, 2004 was the one that saw them down. That's the question.
That would be the evidence. I would just present to them and say, help us with this. Otherwise, we'd like reimbursement for this money, and we'd like reimbursed on an annual basis. We're going to continue to maintain them. In a very polite way.
So... I don't have that. Just put it in lawyer easily. Lawyer nicely. So are you ready for my monkey wrench in the works? I've got a question. Well, I got, I'm still formulaing here because I'm trying to... So we're saying, we've got to have some consistency here to say, we're maintaining BIA routes, and that means it bridges inasmuch as they are neither on BIA, I guess it was... I'm still trying to get my mind real quick. Two bridges that would be something we'd maintain on, they're not on BIA roads. And so they would be on our ticket, right?
If it's maintained by the tribe, though, and they have taken, if they've built that bridge, we're not going to maintain a million dollar bridge that they built.
But do you, I mean, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to, do we have that?
Don't we? 190 and I seven, is that the back page? It's this one right here.
They built it own.
They built it. We closed it, we tore it out, they come back later and built the bridge. And that's why I said I have drawings out there.
Okay, so that's a special case, that's a special case that they're... Despite the fact of everything, it shouldn't have been done that way once. It was just, and the only one, then we threw down the one here that is number nine.
L one is okay, number nine?
Yeah, number nine should be all ours, right?
12, what they have is a route. And we built it, we built that. I don't know. So a lot of these bridges that I found here that's in question, both in our closed bridge fund. And so all these were closed from the county side. They came back and put them in. And most of these here also say from either the Black Stroller or the Indian Supply inspections, that they were going to be turned over to BIA.
But should the tribe, I mean, is that specific thing that we say?
What happened in 2004? What's your...
What's my monkey wrench? What are we doing up north?
Up north?
On the reservations.
What reservation?
The Kickoo Reservation is in Jackson County. Do we have the same problem with that? Are they?
We have roads up there that we maintain on the Kickoo Reservation?
All of them up there. Do they maintain any of the roads in Jackson County? Should they be? Or the bridges that are up there, or anything else?
It is.
That's what that's the question.
If it is on reservation, I'm expecting.
I mean, and that's what...
I mean, I'm not familiar with where the reservation line is.
Remember when you were looking at the map out there?
Yeah.
So it would be just to the, be a mile.
Brown County's maintained all the Kickoo. Easy enough to find out.
Yes. And that's, let's say that's, that would be a mile. So it would be what they call 100th Street. Which is the county line. Which is the mildest side of the old Rockstone.
So it's right off the county line?
Yeah. From the county line down to pass Little Walk. Down to almost 286, and then it goes catty cornered across there.
So how many miles is that?
Well, we cross 278 there. As I said, it goes catty cornered down here on the north end, or on the south end. Clear over to Ashton County.
North and south, is it three miles?
No, it's a lot more than three miles.
Oh. Yeah, you do that one, Little Walk.
It's not there.
County Line Road is...
It says 100, but it's 334 or something like that. Drops clear down to 262nd. And like I said, I was just wondering if we have the same problem there, if they do anything, or?
They do it all.
Yeah, but it's, that appears to be off, but it's not on a section. What's not on a section line? Whatever that... There's a lot of section lines.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that, hold that. I'm sorry. I thought it was like a trail or something. It is. I mean, that's the boundary through there. It comes catty cornered down through there for one reason. And I was just curious if we got the same problem up there as we do down here, or if it's just always been, we maintain. They don't have any, that's not one of the reservations. Yes, it is.
Two different reservations.
Yeah, I understand, but I'd say it's never, they were acknowledged to have a reservation area in. I didn't realize it either until I looked at the, until I looked at the map out there, there's a kid on it.
We need to verify that?
Well, we don't have any BIA routes that go through there.
No, but I think the point is, if we're maintaining roads on reservation, shouldn't BIA be reimbursing us for helping to maintain those?
Well, I should figure out.
I mean, they have a casino, they have plenty of money.
And they're getting federal dollars for doing things.
Oh, we know that, I mean, that they get federal dollars. We just need to, we need to verify that they get, to see if BIA supplies them with any federal dollars to help maintain their roads? Do they have their own road bridge department? Does Brown County reach out to the Brown County guy and say, what do you do on the Kickoo Reservation? Do you maintain it? All those questions, and let's find out.
Yeah, I just, I get the outline of the letter as far as the bridges are concerned now, which is, I'm getting, we're saying to them, this is what our investigation reveals about these bridges. Mine share of them are BIA routes, appear to be bridges built by tribe or feds, and therefore, these need to be handled through your offices to get them on the inventory or deal with inspection, right? We're not doing that now, right? But if there is a problem, it's your problem, not inspection. And we're taking on these two, not just the one. And you have a ring bridge problem.
So you said two, we're taking...
Well, I keep the BIA at that point. This is the one they actually built, the top. So we only have one that's not on a BIA route, that's county route. That we don't have any, it doesn't look like it was built by a tribe, right? That's 20. No, that was... Yeah, right, Mike?
Is he saying that right? Well, I'd have to look at that bridge.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get down to the, we're washing our hands and everything.
There's BIA responsibility, there's tribe responsibility, and what is our responsibility? And should it be our responsibility?
Well, there's only one that could be our, that's what I'm saying, there could be only one on this list right now.
And that was the part I threw back to them on my last email, is do you have, do they have any documentation of where the agreement was made of whose routes these are on the reservation? Who said that that wasn't BIA route? Who said that's a county route? Who said that's a tribal route? Is there any documentation of that? Because again, books go wrong, their map, and their map is not match our map. Our map is just something that's been highlighted over year after year. Well, I also think we need to explain in that, the third point is being, we're maintaining roads, that...
Yeah, I think I want to take a look, like, so I've got an handle on the actual regulations that should have, and say, and that history, maybe there's something in it I didn't want to look at that hard. Because there was that history of, obviously, back in the... 70s, well, 1910, first, the offering of the roads to the Department of Interior, not BIA system. Kind of the, no thank you, they brought it back. And then there was a, there was a chance, the tribe may, which I think was also, you know, not necessarily grabbed a hold of. And so I got some work into that sort of thing. And I want to be quite a little grounded about that, you owe us footprints.
And two, you know, there are bridges on here that's on there, and, you know, where did that all come from? Was there a point in time where they said, okay, we'll accept these bridges on our inventory? I haven't found any of that. Every time I go to any of this that's on the national register, all it says is BIA own. It doesn't give me numbers, locations, nothing, so.
I think I never looked back a minute.
I think you did.
Did you go back a minute? Did you find anything?
No. She, uh...
Did we look, we looked for road maintenance agreements? Okay, we did it.
And she, she found stuff that was by talks in the 70s, you know, she went back that far. And but there was not somebody specific that said this road, this, or these routes, or nothing like that. It was just talks. And it was awesome, or something. She gets any other ideas?
Well, this, I mean, main thing is, is that we're not seeing like a big number of bridges. We should be, we're going to black them.
Right.
There's one. And that just needs, that's something that's up. Well, isn't there nine of them that we've got that aren't on anybody's registry that hasn't been inspected or how long?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
There is one, there's one that's saying that showed up on...
Yeah, in my mind, of the 13, I guess, one of them should be on our list.
You know, once upon a time, we got money from BIA, but they can't remember what it was.
Well, and in answer to your question about whether they have a road bridge department, Kickoo Drive in Kansas Post on October 25th, 2024, shows that they are updating a bridge between Cold Finch and Golden Eagle Road on 140th Street. Bridge construction is nearing completion, concrete poured in the next few weeks, so yes. But that isn't Brown County. Yeah, that's what I meant. But the whole thing isn't, so, okay, fine. What, I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases. If we're digging into this one, I want to make sure we're covered for this also. Yeah, that's, I'm like, I'm going to get my P M on that one too, because I think you're, I think there's a question of, what's the baseline? And second of all, what's, what if any agreements existed? You guys are bound by now about this, and then third is, you know... Yeah, who's, what's the next step? Whatever that says, which means, one, you know, I mean, there's two questions there. What about the past and what about the future? Well, I'm looking more towards the future. Yeah, you're saying... I don't think it's all my hands down on this one too. Well, or the answer is, basically, if we're not going, if we're not going to be compensated for maintaining them, your routes, your responsibility, I mean, are we still responsible to do that? Or are we going to say, you know, come pick up your road?
Right, and the same goes for road, you know, it's on that route, and I don't think it's not for maintaining the roads, they say they're...
I think once we find the answer to that, yes, I think we give reimbursement, and I think we would go after reimbursement, and we stop maintaining them. BIA is responsibility to notify road, their road and bridge department. These are your responsibility. Okay.
Well, what do you need from me?
I don't think there's anything other than, um, you have anything on this? On the bridge number nine, you have a file like that?
Oh, I know.
For number nine, something we want to talk about? You have like a file for that?
At the L...
No, that's number twenty.
Plus.
Plus seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. One ninety-nine seven.
No, 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 I don't care about that.
Right, you can match it up.
It's the L two fifty. It's L one fifty-two. Well, that's, I think we're gonna need to close a loop on that, just to see what we've got.
I'll see if I can find a file on it.
How far do you have all the files, Jack? How far do your old files go out there?
Uh, if, if there's a bridge, it had a file. These were all closed bridge files, which is why everyone that's on here had BIA written on. So, to me, and again, we had five struggles and something another, insurance didn't expect respect, and and they have written right on a lot of those that, that the counties could be taking off the inventory, these would be BIA. A lot of it was not done. I'll see if I can find that.
Okay, well, that's the only thing, just put down to that one, that's all we've got.
Like I say, Todd, with terms of that, I'm not trying to... I, I'm just trying to get ahead of the game on that.
Yeah, offer maps, you know, have that darkened area of the reservation down there. Would that maybe be done up there?
I would say so, yes, I would assume so.
Well, I mean, is that a question, kind of, like thirty by thirty?
No. If you, if you Google that, it shows that as the reservation. And here again, there's another question that comes to mind, which we are dealing with down north, or down south, if we're gonna be dealing with this up north. There's no need to plan it.
What about it?
They've got their own, there's no need to plan it also there.
Are they dealing, are they, those folks in that region come here, we got to escape?
That's, I'm, I'm sure that they do, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I think if we're finding out...
Yeah. I, I, I think that we need to, I, I'm not trying to throw up your interesting, but I think we need to find these things out.
Yeah, they come down, ask.
Yeah.
In that region, there will be still some, sort of, I don't know, more of this, go back to part of the track down. These run into the containment, or something.
That's correct.
I'm gonna go back, or we need to.
Well, I mean, there may be a limitation.
Yeah, there may be, but, I mean, we'll find that out, but when, whenever they started maintaining the roads that they're maintaining now, that's the day I go back to it. If it was, you know, twenty-five years ago, okay.
I have to estimate how long we need to maintain it, because it's how we're...
And they, they can always say, you can only go back ten years, but I, I want them to understand if we've been maintaining them for twenty-five.
Like, do we need to do a lot longer than that?
Yeah, I'm sure, but I don't know how, I don't know how long their road and bridge department's been attacked.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you have somebody scheduled to run the sheriff's though, actually?
No. I brought that up, because we just discussed it this morning, nobody really been notified there. I heard on the radio.
Oh, sorry about that, but, yeah, we just need the usual, it's like a...
Yeah, we don't, we don't have been given anything yet.
Well, I'll, I'll have the, I'll have all the paperwork, oh, we just need somebody, yeah, sheriff's office there who does those.
Yes.
Usually, and with a pen.
Okay.
And that's ten o'clock.
Yeah, ten o'clock, indeed.
Yep, okay. Well, glad we had that thought.
Yeah, we discussed this morning, but Sheriff's Law, you see pretty clear, yeah, it's like, yeah, we did, we heard all news.
Yeah, well, Tim, go on?
No.
Okay, so on up.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. Glad you're there, seeing you.
Hello.
Sheriff, I'm not sure. Are you? I'll get it back. I thought I'd been, oh. Okay, uh, just a little document for Todd, but I've been working on this for a while, but obviously trying to find a way to increase revenue a little bit, so, basically what this is, is an agreement with an individual to help us increase our per diem rate with US Marshal Service. We are of about five regional jails, or whole marshal prisons, we are the lowest. We're currently at seventy dollars per day. Highest is ninety-two. So, I'm willing to shoot for however close we can get to that ninety-two.
What's your average?
Uh, probably eighty-five to eighty-seven. So, we should get somewhere, I'm hoping eighty-eight to ninety, ninety-two's the highest, and the rest of them are eighty, eighty-five, eighty-seven. So, anyway, this, this would basically just help them do the late workforce. Had some questions on the cash basis law, et cetera.
Okay.
Uh, I got them answered, I had them revise it. I also had, and I don't know if I shared with you, Todd, first, but I had K Camp, this K Camp will review contracts for us, and we pay for that service as well, so I sent it to them. I'd have to take that Cooper, look at it, and one of their attorneys. Their only two questions was if they had one of the five employees, they only have two, and I had him list those. And then, the obvious, obviously, there's a clause in there where we don't have to accept it when we're all done. I think it's on page two. Once they get the application done, if the sheriff does not, does not look to move forward, then there's no fee. There is a fee that comes forward after, say, we get eighty-five dollar increase, so that's fifteen dollar increase upon what we're doing. So, what they do is take the first three months of the contract, and they get all that fifteen dollars for the first three months. And then, there after the rest of the year, we get everything.
What does that normally entail? I mean, how many marshals' prisoners do you normally hold?
We're averaging right now about twenty-five, twenty-six. So, and it does say in there, it should generate us at least quarter of a million dollars more, we're hoping.
Over...
Over, we're currently taking, handling. Yeah.
So, I'm just curious, is that something that we can't as a negotiate with federal marshals?
We could, uh, it is pretty time consuming. He sold me on the fact that, obviously, I guess they, they, they do this as a business, and they do it in a number of states, and they have a really good success rate, and they personally as a staff works with US Marshals. And, uh, anyway, yes, we probably could, whether we get, I'm assuming, I guess what I'm looking at, they'll get it done probably in about ninety days, or I'm not sure, it would take us six months, and then we wouldn't be guaranteed to have it. I think there's more than guaranteed.
It's just getting the difference of their fee, right? You're saying, you take a portion of the...
The difference between seventy and whatever they get, so seventy-one, that one.
They get a dollar, yeah.
Okay, and so, that will be the only, uh, money they would get, we don't have any out-of-pocket.
Uh, in other words, we're, it looks like it's out of pocket by the fee, because wherever the increase they get, they're gonna get, but it's only for the first ninety days of the contract. So...
How do you feel about it?
Well, I mean, I, I, I guess two things, and the cash basis problem really isn't one, because you don't get, you don't spend budgetary funds through this, it seems to me. Basically, my quick look.
Right.
The second one is, is that, you know, knowing that I know about kind of how these things work, I, I've, even, I have no base for this other one, but there's some expertise involved in it. Navigating the regulations that would take, uh, a certain amount of time, I think makes it worthwhile. You've got the knowledge base here, but it takes a while for it to US acquire, just the way it is. Complexity is a subsidy, so, and these guys apparently are monetizing that, so... They are much like myself. Basically doing a service, and they have experience in this, so presumably their, their experience would lessen the cost to you man. But, uh, I've never had a reason to do this myself, so I would put a first inkling about it, I've been doing a lot of it.
In your conversation with them, I presume you've asked, said, "Look, where are we at on this spectrum? What is it based on? Is it based on, um, how are we going, how are they going to negotiate a higher rate than what they're basing that on?"
Well, actually, we have not had an increase since twenty-twenty-one, so, one cost, one avenue to inflation from about twenty-twenty-one and a half. Our other is based on the other geographic areas. As a matter of fact, I was, I was down there in US Marshal Office a few months ago. At that time, the, the head guy there said, "Hey," because I was trying to get, I was asking for more inmates, which, we gotta share the inmates. We are at a debate, we're twenty-five miles from Topeka, which is...
Which is a good...
So, that helps us.
Yeah.
But at the same time, they've got four or five other facilities, so they have to share, or they do share the inmates of all services.
So, do they look at how much each place charges, like if we raise it to ninety dollars?
I did ask, I did ask that question, and what, these guys tell me based on their professionalism and experiences, the local office does not care what the per diem rate is.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Their budget, their operational budget is for transportation costs.
Go to the lower places.
So, they don't even really know what the per diem rate is, that comes in the federal.
So, uh, so it says down near your own first page, uh, in the second bullet point then, it says, "We will also calculate the new transportation slash hospital guard rate, as well as rate of guard participation in the court." So, does that transportation play into that then?
I don't look for us to get much for the increase there, because on that end, we are at one of the higher levels.
Okay.
We've already got that up there pretty good. If they can give us a little more, then that's good, but I don't look for that to increase so much.
Okay.
Uh, we can negotiate with, um, according to these guys, and I did talk with the acting director now, we can give you a lot of interest. Like I said, their operational budget, what they're concerned is what they pay in transportation costs out there. And, uh, I guess you, we could negotiate with them that we would do transporting for free. In other words, we would not charge them transportation costs, but they would give us more inmates, so we'll... But I don't know if that'll work out, but that might be something we can negotiate, if we get to that point. But anyway, I think our increase cost will be in the actual, in the per diem rate. I don't think we should change here.
Yeah, I'm fine with proceeding ahead with it to hear the political, see what they can offer.
What's, uh, what's the healthcare situation for federal prisoners, they get sick?
They, they take care of all that.
The costs?
Medical costs. And we are getting ready, of course, we presented that a bit of time, but we are aware we're going to have to pay more, we're getting ready, we have meetings, and we have to sign that contract. We'll start January first, too, but...
I have, it did take care of it.
There'll be some increase there, but we bunch that in, and that's something we talked about.
Yeah, I've got a problem with proceeding with this.
And again, if it comes back to something we don't like about it, sheriff, we're not obligated, that's, I had him put that clause in there, too, as well as, I had him add, uh, just this last week, it's a clause in there that if the government happens to shut down, that they will defer the payment until they start paying us, because like right now...
Oh, you mean for, yeah, to pay off Summerhill?
Yeah, to pay in that.
Yeah.
Because if they shut down, we're still holding prisoners, but we're not giving them a check.
Correct.
And we're, we're gonna be the lead one already this year if we're gonna shut down.
Yeah.
Hopefully not two, but...
It looks like this is the sheriff would sign, and no obligation to, if you don't like, or not, so...
Uh, there is a statement, there is a statement, sheriff.
Well, that's a motion, yeah, so that's...
So, do we want a motion to approve the...
Summerhill Federal IGA Solutions for Local Jails Contract? I'll move, we, uh, move forward with Summerhill, uh, law firm to try to negotiate a better per diem rate.
I'll second.
Okay, proper moving second to move forward with the Summerhill Federal IGA Solutions for Local Jails to negotiate a new per diem for the intergovernmental service agreement between Jackson County and the US Marshal Service. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, but if you carry.
No further, no further questions on that?
We did have one question. Tim had sent an email last week concerning Mr. Roman's badge.
Yes.
Is that his service weapon also, because we included service weapon in the motion?
He did not ask, but he did mention to me that he got it off, that he was just on the badge, but...
Okay.
Okay, we'll leave that up to him, I think he was just in the badge, but you would need to rescind your motion to say...
We will.
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
I don't know how to do that, but leave it up to him, or, as far as I know, he was just asking for the badge, and he's, he's...
If there's a sign, we can go and comment.
All right.
All right, sounds good, Todd, if we're here by nine forty-five Monday morning, that we got one?
Yeah, who do I send the documents to? Okay, I, I got some stuff.
Just send it to the sheriff, whoever, we'll make sure.
Okay.
Sometimes he adds, sure see that, I think, tax, yeah.
Tax, I just have the sheriff, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be sending some stuff later this week.
Thank you. Have a great week, see you later, thank you.
I'm a very good message from the federal transportation officers.
I saw it eat your head, you were following your...
Yeah, see if I made it, see if I remember to live through this storm. Yeah, see if I made it, see if I remember to lift you this morning.
Is everybody ready for minutes from November twenty-fourth?
Yes.
You have? Did anybody see any changes or corrections?
We'll have to rescind that.
Yeah. It's talking to you. It's been talking to people all day, so. Just a quick question. Have you had, you know how we can issue permits for down here on the reservation, right? Do you have anything for up north? Anybody?
Within, within the bounds.
Within the boundaries of the reservation if they're...
But in Jackson County, do we, do we issue building permits?
We still issue building permits there.
Okay. Because I had thought that I had read, where they have their own zoning and planning, but they have not pushed the issue on that, or?
Yeah, they haven't, no one's coming to me about it.
Okay, all right.
I know it's time to you about it.
No, 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 we're just trying, with the whole situation we're having down here with roads and bridges and the zoning and the planning, I'm just trying to make sure that we're hitting the game up here, so.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know.
Because I didn't realize they dropped down that border in Jackson County, to be honest with you. So, okay.
I don't know that we have that on our map yet.
That's what we were just discussing here, we probably need to put it on our maps.
It's getting the official boundary lines, the legal for it.
Yeah.
So...
Boy, you can't take, pin off Google Maps and launch Google Maps, so that's good.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know how you get that, how you go about getting the official...
BIA would have the official maps, launch Google Maps, but that's not important.
Yeah, right now. Okay, that was it. I'm just, you know, curious, we were having discussion about the bridges and stuff, and I was asking about what we're doing, so I want to make sure that we're, we got all our eyes down in our D's grounds, so. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I haven't heard anything yet, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and then are we just going to rescind that motion?
Correct.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Is the proper move seconded to approve the minutes of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carry. Then, I will also entertain a motion to rescind the motion made last week.
A move that we rescind the motion to give the weapon and badge into Officer...
Romans.
Romans, to exclude the weapon. Motion to exclude the weapon.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, seconded to rescind the motion made last week to approve presentation of service weapon badge from Officer Romans upon his retirement to be just the badge. Any further discussion? Todd, I need, I need a motion on that. Did you do that? You did that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carry.
A move to give the badge, which is cam property to Officer Romans.
Second.
Okay, proper moving second to two percent, Officer Romans with his badge upon retirement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carry. Get a line.
What, how did you have it delayed?
Okay, that was the...
Eight thousand dollars.
Aaron said that he's gonna be had questions on that. That is several separate times when they went out there and did the, did the out, the hydrants, but they just sent it all as one bill. So Kurt did not go over his authorization or anything, because they, they did it several times during the summer.
But they're just that bill?
Yeah, so they just sent one bill. I believe she saw that and said, called Kurt and said, "What's going on?", and said they just sent the one bill for it, so. For everything they did over the summer.
Because that's what, I mean, essentially is a nine thousand dollar bill, so that's...
It's for summer.
So I'd like to, I mean, it would be nice if we had the dates that we knew when those were done, and...
Hey, what's going on?
I think they should bill us per job, because otherwise, otherwise bid them all and have Kurt get authorization.
Okay.
And over nine thousand dollars. Would be my thought.
Okay. I didn't agree with him that part, I guess. Okay. All right, sounds good, I appreciate it, Mary. You bet, bye-bye.
I hope that we can see her.
Yeah.
Who's that?
Mary.
Mary.
Savage.
And?
Had the gentleman call and get free with her because he wants a drink of water.
Still stoned?
Yeah, a little bit. Just not eating up really well, a lot of booze, I wouldn't think.
I would, yeah.
Oh, yeah, a lot of places. Maryville.
Oh, yeah, because of course they have the... These...
Did they do it to you?
Because I think it's on, it was canceled. They had it to our, they started, that's why, I didn't see it either, so.
You guys have this? That's on to you.
No, I just want to be one.
Thank you. I'll pass that, let them look at it.
He got it.
Was Chris Miller working for the sheriff's?
Yes.
Are you tired?
Doesn't tell how many hours they're going to spend. I mean, one cable, cable connector, missile, that is, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah. Well, for the new install, it's eighteen hundred dollars. For the same, it would be for the same thing, other than they're installing into a different process or everything, but I can't imagine that the cables are going to be another six hundred dollars for that rather than that. And then the installation testing and commissioning, I believe that one was, what, seventeen?
Seven-five, five.
Eighty-nine hundred on here.
For who?
For this is for the new install, we bought it as a new.
That does include removing, computing, any computers, computer monitors, and that would be...
That's why I just gotta look it up, see, let's see, give an idea of something that's priced on here, because it just doesn't make any sense to me how much they're charging And for just that small port ring, finished DOE touchscreen controller, clean wall boundary.
Yeah, I think it looks a little bit. I mean, I wondered, like, the computer doctor, did they do any of that stuff?
I don't know. Anything else? I can't think of any.
Any of mine else paid up?
Nope, just the one so far. It's a flat.
I can't remember the name.
I've heard of him somewhere. 4E Flex, I don't remember, I'm sorry. They've got twenty-two on here and they're different prices, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen. That's like seventy-five percent market, right?
It is, yeah.
Might need to spread that out. Oh, mean notes? But they better find somebody else. You know, the Fleming, better find someone else. Yeah, that's...
Maybe the old...
You have one of those there to look for soft over?
I, we can jerk, but I, I don't...
Uh, anything before today?
I just need to finish with you, Bill.
And you guys won't be here next Monday, right?
Next Monday?
You guys will be here Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Conference doesn't start until Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, good deal, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
This is the same conference we've gone to every year.
Okay.
I got it all wired.
I know, and there, that used to be one.
Yes, what, what evening do we want? Do we want to try and do it December, or are we going to stretch until January?
For what?
For a meet with Adrian. I just think get it done.
Yeah.
Uh, what about the eighth, next week?
Four.
Or do you want to go to fifteen, give a few weeks to see them together?
You don't put me at ten o'clock next night, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So mark up on the agenda, ten, ten o'clock, we might let it go later. Okay. How long will it take?
How long will it take? Six, seven hours. I don't know. It depends, it depends.
I mark up an hour, it won't take me more than that.
Yeah, maybe, I think we're down to... Let's say, what day is it, you say?
Either the eighth or the fifteenth, if we want to give you a week or want to give you...
I'd go to fifteen.
I'm fine with it.
And feel one everybody, if you have six. All right, see you later, Todd, be careful.
Yeah, fifteen is fine.
Okay.
Six, three, seven o'clock.
I would think it's... We did six o'clock.
I believe.
Yeah, we did six, so I just need to stay up six and go.
Okay, so December fifteenth, eighteenth.
Yep. Mary, anything else? You gonna throw up there, Mary?
I am. Looks like Spike threw somewhere in the room, too.
There's nothing else down before today, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.
Is the proper move seconded, adjourn this meeting, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carry. Nah, probably...
This is the one we did next month. Okay.
Yep, that's the one we did, so, so. Yeah. Take care.
Okay.